Okay. I will call this in-person meeting to order. Committee of the whole, June the 23rd. Welcome, everybody, face to face. We're loving this. I'd like to acknowledge that we are on the unceded lands of the Mi'kmaq. Lindsey, you have a record of attendance. There is no absent with regrets. Declaration of the Conflict of Interest, and you can certainly declare at the time of the agenda item. Approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions? Okay. I thought I had an addition. Okay, Counselor Cleveland, seconded by Counselor Lesser. Any discussion on that? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. No presentation. Okay, so staff reports. Cao report. I've never, I've never seen a request for decision under one of your reports. Go ahead.
Your worship, that's a little different, and I asked for it intentionally. Usually, we don't have Todd Muse come into Committee of the whole, but I did ask him to leave his, his regular work to come in and be here in case there were any questions of counsel on this. So I did put it under my report. If you want to deal with the report first, and then I can speak to the
Certainly.
Request for decision.
Yep, certainly. So, any questions for the Cao on his report? Looks good. Okay, so the request for decision.
Thank you, worship. So, the request for decision comes to counsel on a matter that, as I think I indicated in email, would not normally be brought to counsel. Normally, working with event sponsors on the details of using our facilities is something the staff does in the regular run of, of business. But when, when the decision of staff was communicated to the event organizers for the Shark Scramble, the response was is that they would be going to a higher level or going to counsel, going to the mayor. So I thought that we better, we better make sure we're on the same page and make sure counsel's aware of, of the concern. So primarily, the concern around the fishing vessels and the Shark Scramble is that the vessels have gotten bigger, and the, the marina has gotten busier, and clearing the customers out of the marina for a, what turns out to be, ends up being close to a week, is a disruption to our regular customers, and it puts additional strain and results in some damage to our infrastructure, our marina infrastructure. The marina is essentially built for small pleasure craft, and you've probably noticed, everyone in the community knows that fishing boats have gotten larger and larger over the years. And, you know, 20 years ago, or whatever, whenever the Shark Scramble started, the vessels, we talked to, to the owner of, of Rutter's Marina, and he, that was his observation as well, is that when they started the event, and he was one of the, one of the original organizers and sponsors, is that the boats that participated were, were significantly smaller. And last, last year, the number of berths that were available for the fishing vessels was limited, I think, to six berths. And what happened, unfortunately, is that the vessels tied up side by side, as they sometimes do with fishing wharves, and so that put, not less strain on the infrastructure, but actually put more strain on the infrastructure. And so it was communicated to the event organizers that we can certainly accommodate the unloading of the, of the catches on the Rutter's Marina, or Rutter's Wharf, by backing the vessels in, having them unloaded, and then have them depart to Fishing Wharf down the street. You know, that changes certain elements of the event for, for the participants, but I think that change is, is necessary in terms of the condition and preservation of the, of the marina infrastructure. But also, frankly, it takes, takes the vessels away, and sometimes associated with these events, the vessels become, I mean, they are private vessels, and, and private functions happen on those vessels that don't necessarily, aren't necessarily compatible with, with the public wharf and right-of-way that, that we have around, around the, the wharf. So, for those reasons, we're recommending that, that, and staff have conveyed to the, to the event organizers, that the wharf would be available for the unloading of catches, but there would be no birthing of the vessels at either Marina Killams or Rutter's.
Okay. So just for the Shark Scramble?
So, yes, so fishing vessels, fishing boats, lobster boats, essentially.
They don't tie up there?
They don't tie up there regularly, yeah.
Okay. So my second question is, who polices this? And how do, how do we make sure that this happens? Like, this is infrastructure we need.
Right. So, so we have marina staff. We have, we have two marina staff that, that run the marina. And, you know, we will police it to the extent that they can, and that is, you know, one of the things that we've been, we've been trying to get, and through, through Todd and his staff, is better cooperation from the event organizers on some of these issues that we've had. And it hasn't been what it needs to be, and so Todd and his staff will do the best they can to police that. Our concern, of course, is, is the infrastructure, our customers. We want them to have a successful event. It has been a successful event in the past. And, you know, what they do up on the, on the wharf with the weighing of the sharks and that, I think that is interesting to, to our visitors and our community. But, you know, birthing the, the fishing vessels at the Fishing Wharf where, where, you know, that is of the size and, and strength to withstand the pressures of the, of the boats is, is what we need to do.
Okay, I guess, like, okay. I guess I'm just thinking, like, how do, are we going to be able to police this? We need to have it in place, but I guess we just need to make sure that the staff is not, that's not hurt on the staff. Does that make sense? I want to protect the staff from, from having to deal with folks that don't want to listen.
Yeah, so it's, it's a limited change. As I said, we had only six berths available to, six berths, Todd, last year. So it was limited with the opportunity that was there last year for the fishing vessels. I think if you go way back in time, the entire marina, at least on the Rutter's side, was cleared for, for the event. But over time, you know, the marina's gotten busier. We've, we've, I think Todd used his arm today to tell me how long the waiting list was for people to get birthing at the marina. So the marina is, is a successful marina. If anything, we should be talking about how do we expand
Expand it.
Our marina, and, and not how do we move our customers out for, for this event. And, and, you know, I think it is possible to have this successful event right in the middle of our, of our waterfront, in the pedestrian or tourist-friendly part of our waterfront, to have this event. It's interesting, it's informative, educational, but the vessels themselves are so big and take up so much room, and our marina's so busy, that I think what's been proposed by staff here is, is the best compromise
Okay.
Solution going forward.
All right. Go ahead, Counselor Haffield.
Thank you. I just want a question for clarification. When we're talking about the marina, I'm, is that, are those the floating, the floating docks? And that's what's causing
That's right.
The, the problems with infrastructure
That's right.
When you've got multiple fishing boats, and they're not made for that. So I just kind of want, that's how I interpreted it, but I just want to make that clear for the public, that it isn't about the wharfs, it's about those floating docks
That's right.
And the pressure that it puts on those.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so, so what we're proposing is that the boats could come in, they could back up to the wharf itself, the fixed structure, and they could unload with the crane they use there to unload the, the catches. And then they could, once they're unloaded, they, they move off and tie up at the, at the Port of Yarmouth, the, the fixed fishing wharves, just, you know, a block or, or two over, or a lot or two over, and, and then the next boat comes in and unloads their catch. We've had contact with Greg Shea and with Port of Yarmouth, and, you know, he's on with that plan. There's no issue with that.
Okay. All right, so the recommended motion is that counsel support the recommendation of staff and allow no fishing vessels to berth at Killams and Rutter's Marinas for the Shark Scramble except for the offloading of catches. Who wants to make that motion? Counselor Bell, seconded by Counselor Gill. There's. All right, any discussion? All those in favor? Oh, sorry, did you have a question? Sorry.
I just wanted to say that I made the motion, and I'm supporting the motion because primarily, I'm very concerned about the infrastructure that we have put a lot of money in. And as the clerk, as the Cao has said, the marina is becoming more popular. It's getting known throughout the province. I hear from people who have come in here and been absolutely stunned by the amenities that are here, the way they're treated, what's available to them, and also the, the ability to be on a working waterfront, where you are, you know, where you're rubbing shoulders with the actual work of, of marine, you know, marine industry. So I don't want to do anything that puts our marina in jeopardy, and I recognize that the, it's an incapacity, it's, it's an incompatibility issue, and, and it is unfortunate, but, but that, I, I support the motion for those reasons. Thanks.
Good. Okay. Go ahead, Counselor.
Yeah, well, having been involved in a new number of the Yarmouth yacht races over the years, I can tell you that the infrastructure isn't capable of supporting larger boats. And anytime we had a yacht that was oversized, it had to go to mooring. It was that simple. I fully understand that, that the participants in the Shark Scramble would like to stay in the area where the party's taking place, but you're right, we can't jeopardize our infrastructure for that reason. So I will be supporting the motion for that reason.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. So I have a question for you now, Cao. How do we get, let's add on to the marina on the docket for the next meeting? We need to at least discuss it. That's a lot of
So I think that's a great topic for our Waterfront Advisory Committee.
Perfect.
So we need to get that up and running, and that's, 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 that's an issue, right?
It is an issue.
And I, I think the, the Waterfront Corporation had recognized that that was coming, and there were other options on our waterfront.
Mm-hmm.
So, so hopefully, that's
Awesome.
That's something we can dig into.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else for the Cao? Fire department report, and the chief is here. We were just at the, upstairs in the fire department last night, chief, and quite enjoyed it, again. Any questions for the chief? Okay, good. Operational services, Chad is here. Any questions? Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Any questions for Chad? I have a question. Why a new, why the new Pride Bench? What happened to the Pride Bench?
Pardon me?
We have a new Pride Bench.
Why do we have a new one? The old, the old one, if you remember, the Pride Bench that we, that we purchased was kind of a compromise to the request we got to put in the Pride Crosswalk. So we bought it kind of quickly.
Quickly, that's right.
And it was local, it was literally $200, but it, it fell into some disrepair over the last couple of years.
All right. I wondered if there was vandalism. Okay. I have, I have another one.
Sure.
The crosswalk on Hibernia, and maybe one on Prospect. What's the chances before the school year? I don't know how the process works, so.
Well, the one on Hibernia is, is still under review. We just, engineering did a traffic count for us
Okay.
Just last week, so we're analyzing the data.
Okay.
I apologize, I, I know it's taken a long time.
No, it's, you can't make it go any faster with
Yeah.
The, the data. I just didn't know what, if, like, is it a possibility before the next school year? Because we're getting that, we're also getting crossing Prospect, right?
I'll make this promise, we'll make a decision before the school year.
Okay.
Prospect Street's new to me, I don't recall.
No, it probably hasn't come, it's just, I just keep getting messages about trying to get kids over to Meadowfield. Sorry, Counselor?
Pardon me?
It, it wasn't, it wasn't from Counselor Lesser, we just want to make note of that in the minutes. Okay? Counselor Heather?
Yeah, I, it's more, it's just a comment more for the, the public that might be listening today. I just note in your report that there is certified A compost now available for sale at the compost
Yes, yeah.
Facility for anybody who, who wants that, so, thanks.
I have one more.
Sure.
I think we mentioned it, but I don't think we did anything with it. Seminary in Collins, one-way. I just don't, I don't get it.
We had a request from, I think, one local citizen a couple of years ago to, to, for us to consider reverting it back to two-way. I think we've deferred the decision until we know what the future use is going to be of the central school.
Okay.
Because what we don't want to do
That's fair.
Is revert it back to two-way
Yep, nope, that's
And have a similar use in the, in the central school
That's fair.
Only to have the mask for one-way street again.
Perfect. Okay, that was, that was my question. Anyone have questions for, for Chad? Go ahead.
I don't know what the answer is to this, but I'm, I'm doing a lot of walking downtown and on the waterfront, and I'm just wondering if there is a program for maintenance of the downtown light standards, because I notice some of them are in pretty hard repair. Some of them are actually gone completely, and there's just the wires and the valves sticking up at the, so just wondered what, what, what we do to maintain those light standards.
Yeah, there is, there's an inspection and maintenance program. We've kind of, I'll admit, we've fallen behind a bit. We've gotten prices to replace some, some posts and fixtures over the last couple of years. COVID has driven the price of goods and, and availability of goods, but we'll get back on it. If you, if you see any, anything specific areas in your walks, please send us a message.
Anyone else? Good stuff. Thanks, Chad.
Thank you.
Okay, we have planning and economic development, and Natalie's here. Any questions for Natalie? I, I have to say, I love the approach on the unsightly, and some of the particular places that need a little bit of attention. Go ahead, Counselor Lesser.
Yeah, I'm going to echo that as well. The unsightly properties that existed, you know, a few years ago are, are becoming fewer every day. I actually thought I was going to report one the other day myself, and the next day it was, I don't know if it was on your list or how it happened, but it, it got cleaned up pretty quick, and, but my question isn't around that. It's, on the way here today, by the Fisherman's Memorial, there's like a mobile instrument. Is that, is that the one that we had talked about before as the possibility of, it's like a xylophone type of thing, kids are down playing?
You probably didn't see it. It's, it's like a mobile band, it's the big guy.
Oh, the instruments?
Yeah.
The mobile instruments that the Rotary Club Chamber
Yes.
Has installed?
So that is, that's ours now, like, it's our?
We don't own it.
No.
But it, it is owned by the Chamber, and they put it in various places for people to engage with.
There were all kinds of kids down there playing it, it was, it was quite nice to see, yeah.
I guess it's doing what it needs to do.
Exactly. Any more questions for Natalie? Bell, go ahead.
I was interested, sorry, Natalie.
You just want me to get my steps in?
This is just a request, this is just a request for, for the, for next month. I'm wondering, there's a graph for building permits that shows year to year, and I'm wondering, would it be possible to get a pre-pandemic comparison? Because it looks like we're going gangbusters. I mean, there's been a big increase in
Yeah, we can do that, that's no problem.
And I just wonder, just for my own
Yeah.
So that I'd have a sense of where we are pre-pandemic.
Happy to do that.
Yeah, great, thanks.
No, we're good. I was just trying to find the, the 15-minute city concept, which, which was something new to me, so I, that was a little learning curve. Okay, good. Engineering report? And is Mr. Brophy here? He's not, but you know what? I'll bet you our engineer is.
Your worship, I'm pleased to advise counsel that Mario Dunkley is, has been appointed as the town engineer.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're, you're, I mean, you already know you're going to love it. And you've, I, I don't know that anybody can get any better experience than the last couple of years, because these projects have been huge, and you've run so many of them, and, so thank you for everything you've done. And any questions for our engineer? It's kind of exciting to say it. Oh, come on, I told him it would be hard, the first meeting. All right, so far, so good. Don't be looking for that same thing next meeting. Okay, finance, Jerry's here. Oh, he's coming to the microphone with Opi and Us, that just can't be good.
I'm ready.
I think, are we good? We're good?
That was a, a bit of an oversight on our part. I'll take some
Saying we're good?
No. The reporter requests about reallocating some budget for capital.
Okay.
The mayor, some of that's in there. So, yeah, Duran's been looking for, the CEO of the mayor has been looking for a response from myself or Jeff to say that we've officially approved his budget for him. In the, in the process, in our town operating budget, I do make sure and made sure that the allocated, or money required for operations was in our operational budget, but we never specifically talked about Duran's capital list. So in the capital list, the other, our partners have sent official letters saying budget's been approved, and their share of the capital has been approved, that kind of thing. So I've since talked to Duran, said, I just make it official. We do have the flexibility within our budget, as I pointed out in the, in the letter, but I just wanted to make sure that everyone's aware of what we're doing, and that we can officially let Duran know that it's been done. He's also pointed out that he's been quite busy, and he's, he's behind on his capital already, so he goes, I'm not going to get 400,000 this year, but I do need some, so.
Good stuff. Any questions for Jerry? Thanks for that, Jerry.
Okay, thanks.
Any questions? We're good? Okay. Go ahead.
So we should have a motion
Yep.
To, to confirm that?
Certainly. Okay. Seconded by Counselor Deputy Mayor. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you, worship.
Yes. Good. Okay, Yarmouth Recreation, and Frank's here. Any questions for Frank? It's like you've got a busy agenda there. This is awesome. Got hit, kids hired? You having success with that?
It's, it's been probably the most challenging summer hiring staff.
You're not alone, it's every business, every
You know, normally, when we make calls, looking for staff, excitement, yes, when do I start? And now it's, is it every day in the summer? Eight, eight hours a day? And seriously, and, and this is the worst part. We've got 19 summer positions, I've got 15 filled, and I'm waiting for callbacks, because some of our prospective employees need time to ponder. So it's delaying start times, we're trying to scramble, move people around, and it's, it's really got me thinking about our entire program, and how are we going to deal with this if this is just year one of changes with the, with our human resources?
Yeah, remember we said at the committee meeting, like, what if we, what if we gave them some more money? I don't know, an extra buck or a couple bucks an hour is going to matter, it's the work ethic.
I did, I did do some research, you know, because there were some concerns that we weren't paying enough.
Yeah.
We are competitive in the Valley and South Shore for what we're paying summer staff. Coordinators are a dollar more an hour than minimum wage, and leader positions are at minimum wage, which we know has gone up a couple times in the last year. Some departments have gone, and I don't know how they manage it, it was explained to me, and I still couldn't quite figure it out, that they've gone to lump sums, telling, hiring a staff person, saying that you can make $5,600 in a, in a summer if you work all of these hours, it's up to you. But how do we do that if we, if someone says, well, I only work for $3,000? So that means we have to hire two people to fill that one position to make sure our staff ratios within programs are covered. So I, I, that's what the town of Kenfield has done. They've kind of tried to change it up, so it doesn't look like an hourly rate, and it's more of, wow, I can make $5,600 in the summer, but if they choose to make less, then it impacts all the other things, and you have to hire more, and we, we have to, we have to get so many hours for each student to qualify for our summer grants, and it's, it's been a challenge. But I think the 15 we got will be good.
Okay.
If we don't fill those other positions, then we'll try to be creative in trying to fill them in a different way, but it's been a challenge. But we're forging ahead. The deputy mayor is, is rallying counsel for some Canada Day activities to kick off the summer, and then all of our programs start on July the 4th.
Awesome. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, just to speak further to what Frank said, he was up to the school there this week, we had a great meeting. We're going to do, council's going to do a breakfast on Canada Day morning. Some great events planned for Canada Day, actually at the South End Park, looking forward to that, to bring back the old glory there. Canadians are actually donated a 12-foot kayak that'll be given away as a prize and some other things, so
Oh my gosh.
Just glad that we're back to actually planning and getting things rolling, so, you know, it's nice to be here again, and even just back here for a meeting, and hopefully it's a full summer of fun. And as far as employees go, I, I work with kids, I know, I know your pain. I understand, it's not for lack of effort, you've been up to the school
No.
A few times, we try to push it ourselves, so, but looking forward to a, a good summer of events, hopefully, so.
Yeah, it's, everyone's screaming. I get calls all the time from businesses saying, what, can you help me get employees? They can't get employees, anybody. Counselor Lesser?
Just thinking of the first-world problems that we're having right now.
Right.
It's amazing to think that rec jobs, which were back in our day, was, were the jobs to get, and now, like, yeah, they're out there and people don't want them, it's amazing. But it's not, it's not the job, it's the, there just isn't the workforce that are willing to do the work, so. Actually, my, I didn't want to bring it up, it's a different topic, but just thinking of what's happened in Yarmouth in the last little bit, especially at Yarmouth High, involving sports, I think speaks to some of the facilities and some of the things we have going on here. We had a girl named Olivia Hamilton that won gold at wrestling at Nationals at U-17. Senior girls softball were provincial champs. I'm not sure if that's, I don't, some of these things are, are certainly first, but I've never heard of this many provincial records in a, in a short time. Jaleel Horton won the gold at 100-meter. Interesting story, I think somebody had mentioned to me that he just decided one day, I think I'm going to try running this year, decided to run and beat everybody, and I think the park few people that were there that had been running their whole lives, kind of like, who is this guy? And he, he just, yeah, it's pretty impressive that somebody can just start running and get the 100-meter. Zoe Shwan with Discus, she won provincial gold, and Ben LeBlanc, second in hurdles. I'm not sure, deputy mayor, if I'm missing others, but we've, we've had some pretty impressive sport accomplishments over the, the last little bit, and I don't know what that's going to mean for your sports awards coming up, but it's, it's, it says, it speaks to the, you know, to the facilities and the need for even better facilities in, in Yarmouth, when we have people, people winning provincial national titles, so, that's good.
Yes, definitely, they'll be on our athletic awards ceremonies in the fall.
Good stuff. Okay, anything else for Frank? We're good? Thank you. Okay, business, Yarmouth Farmers Market. The recommended motion there is to recommend the council grant 4,300 to the Yarmouth Farmers Market because of their successful application from ACOA.
I'll make that motion.
Okay? Seconded by Counselor Daers. Go ahead, Cao.
Yeah, I think a bit of an explanation here of how this is coming to you now at this time is, a letter of support was provided to them last year, and it was to be, it was to be included in your consideration at budget time. Unfortunately, we missed it. It didn't get to the Director of Finance, and so it didn't get incorporated in your budget package, and so they were successful in their application.
That's great. That's great.
And so the ask coming back is, so how do we make up the budget? Well, oops, our fault. Didn't have it for you at that time. So apologies for that, but it's a good news story outside of our miss.
Good stuff. Okay, moved and seconded. Go ahead, Counselor Daers.
While they're asking for 4,300 from each of the municipal units, they're also committing 4,300 fundraising on their own, so I think that's admirable as well.
Love it. Yeah. You know, we're finding more and more that the organizations, events, all those that are taking it upon themselves, like the Splash Park, right? They get it done. Okay, so anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, next one is Tuscat Track. And I don't see anything under it, so it's going to be this, CAO's going to have to explain that one. After he has this conversation. Yeah, we're just at Tuscat Track.
Your Worship, Counselor Daers had asked that be added to the agenda, so.
At the most recent Mariners Center Expansion Committee meeting, the CAO for Argyle reminded those in attendance that some years ago, there was a commitment from the town of Yarmouth, I think it was up to $200,000, to support a project to expand the Tuscat Track, I believe, to a permanent surface, eight-lane track with a permanent surface. And of course, that has, I think the town probably carried that on their budget for a number of years, and since there wasn't any legs under it, it eventually got taken off the table. So it was a reminder that that project is still viable. They would like to proceed in the future. They understand that the Mariners Center Expansion Committee is not the vehicle that should be used. So I think what's going to occur is that there will be a similar board or committee formed to try to develop that park, that track into a competitive track, and to do so before the next Acadian Games. So I just wanted to sort of give a heads up that that's the direction they're going, and I think we should probably plan for that in the future.
Okay. Go ahead, Counselor Cleveland.
That was an accident.
Okay. CAO?
So, Worship, I can fill in some additional details on that. So it was about seven years ago that the joint council set some regional priorities, and those were big-ticket items. Mariners Center Expansion, there was an airport priority in there, and I think maybe the ferry terminal was the third one. I'm going from memory here. But the fourth one was the track. And the reason it was excluded or taken off the list of regional priorities was because all of the others were, you know, north of $10 million, and here was the track at $1.2 million. And so I think it was Deputy Mayor Mooney who suggested we take it off and we just do it. And so that was the, that was the first thing that he said. And I think the second thing he said is, and that we should, the town, commit to one-third of the local cost. So in Argyle's, in Ms. Polly of Argyle's view, the track should be paid for at least 50% from either the province or the federal government, and that the local contribution should be half or less. And so we budgeted the maximum of half, so 200, a third of 600,000. And as Alan pointed out at the threesome meeting, you know, the cost of that track may be, two things he said that were important to know is that the cost now may be north of $2 million because seven years has passed, COVID has happened, nothing's gone down, everything's gone up. But the other thing he said that was important is that maybe it's not an eight-lane track. So an eight-lane track gives you a competitive track where you can host provincial events. But the truth is, is that the only provincial event that draws a lot of track and field athletes is the school, athletic federation's track and provincials. That event moves from region to region, and I think there are four regions in the province. There are, this would be the fourth track in our region. So your best opportunity for hosting provincials, the big provincials, is once every 16 years. It might not be worth shoehorning in the extra two lanes, whereas you can hold districts, which is a pretty big meet. You can hold club events, and you can entice and get more people participating in the sport because you'll have better facilities. And you'll have more people like Jaleel and others who've won provincial championships achieve everything they can be in track and field. So I think we need to be prepared for two things, is one is that if we're going to do something about a track, let's get on with it. And be prepared that our share might end up being more than 200,000, given the costs have escalated since we encouraged, since we initially encouraged the project go ahead. So, yeah, so there will be a committee, I guess, but is there a motion, Counselor Daers? Is there a motion that we need today from this group?
I don't believe so. I think we need to wait until Argyle initiates a committee, and then we'll hear from the committee. This is just a heads up that this is coming down the bike.
Thanks for that. Okay, we're good. Compliant Communication Policy Amendments. The recommended motion there is to recommend that council amend the communications policy and to update the name to Complaints Policy.
Yeah, so we had a communications policy, so-called, but it was really a complaint policy, and there is a misspelling that will get fixed after this meeting.
There's a couple.
So it's not a compliant policy.
No.
But, yeah, it's just some small amendments to the policy. And one of the ones particularly is that when we receive complaints, we want to get them in writing, and email is considered in writing. Verbal complaints, you know, we'll ask, staff will ask, people complain, not that we'll ignore them, but if we're going to track complaints, then we need to have it in writing so that it's not our interpretation of what somebody else said. And we do have forms at the front counter for that. We do receive concerns or heads up through See, Click, Fix, and through emails, of course.
And through Facebook messages to ask.
And through Facebook messages occasionally, that kind of thing, yeah.
That's the hard part, because I, I guess I'm old-school. I still don't consider that a formal, we try to direct them better. Okay, so are we good with that? Can I have the motion? Did somebody make the motion? Okay, Counselor Heather Hatfield, Deputy Mayor. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Meadowfields Community School Playground. Go ahead, Counselor Daers.
Yeah, she might be aware that the playground at Meadowfield School, which services a significant population of schoolchildren from the town, but also from our neighbors. The playground in the, at the school has been condemned, and one of the uses that is fairly common for that is through the summer months, the recreation department holds their day camps there, and that playground was a very popular fixture. At any rate, there is an initiative underway to try to replace the playground, and spearheading the fundraising for that would be Lori McClay. I'd like to make a motion that we invite Lori McClay to council to make a presentation on behalf of the Meadowfield School for funding for the playground, and I can provide the contact information.
Okay. So moved. I got a seconder. Seconded by Counselor Cleveland. Any further discussion? We wrote a letter of support for that.
Nope, that was for an outdoor classroom, but.
Oh, was it?
Yeah, I believe so.
Not the playground?
It might have been. I don't know. I'm not aware of the letter of support for the playground, but.
Wow, okay.
I just know that it's not going to be accomplished through bake sales.
No, it's not. Okay. Go ahead, Deputy.
I just think it's sad that we build schools and these things aren't included when we build them. How do you build a school and not have a place for kids to play? I mean, you know, it was the same frustration when, yes, was built, and they come. But thankfully, we have driven community members that see the importance of it, and it gets done at the end of the day. But I just think if anyone's talking to an MLA or anyone in the provincial government, it might be something nice to add.
Yeah. And I think a couple things. We keep paying for it, which we will, but we keep paying for it, and they will keep not providing it. And it's a place for play, but in my estimation, it's another place besides the classroom to socialize the children, right? Like, it's so important. It's such an important part of school, and not just for fun. And after-school, exactly. So it's not, it is a part, for me, it's a part of education. Go ahead, CAO.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to point out on that one that that school is over 20 years old. And there were two pretty good playgrounds. My kids used to love to go to those playgrounds. But they've been worn out. They've become worn out and fallen into disrepair, just, you know, the weather takes its tolls. We know in our own town playgrounds, so it's time for replacement. And I think that's what the effort is here, is, I think there was a pretty good playground package with that particular school. It was a P3, and so I don't know if there was an enhancement from the community at the time, but those were pretty good playgrounds at the outset. And, you know, maybe not for the number of kids, but I know after-hours, my kids used to love to go to that school.
Go ahead.
I will say that those playgrounds, that playground in particular has been well-used. It's very seldom you drive by there throughout the summer and not see anybody there. And I know that part of the component of the proposal is to improve the safety of the playground as well, to limit the amount of interaction between the children that are using the playground and vehicular traffic. So that's one of the components that's being considered, and accessibility is another. So each of those components comes with a cost as well.
Yeah. So here's a question. We fund the playgrounds that the province should be funding, but we fund those, do they maintain them, even though, like, who builds them? Do we give them the money to build it, or do we build it? Do you know that? Like, I'm just going to say it. Todd's not going to have to maintain a playground just because we provided the funds for it. It's a school. Okay. I had to check that. Don't need to pile on more. Okay. All right, so the motion's been made and seconded. Go ahead, Counselor Baut.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm just sort of dusting the cobwebs off of my brain. That was a triple-P school, right? That was a school that was built by a private entity and then leased by the school. Was the playground part of the initial package, or was that a community use of school add-on? I mean, I'm just wondering, what are the responsibilities of the private partner to maintain it, and how long was that agreement for? I don't know anything. I'm just trying to sort of figure out who's ultimately going to be responsible.
So initially, Your Worship, I may, so the school was built as a P3 on a 20-year lease, and as the lease expired, the province actually bought the school. So it's no longer privately owned, but the private partner was responsible during the term of the lease to staff and to maintain the facility. I would say that, I shouldn't say anything about it, but, you know, playgrounds do deteriorate over time. And I don't know that it was unsafe when it was under private ownership. I don't know that. And I don't know that it's unsafe now. That I defer to the people who know the playground better than I do.
Good. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Special Events Application and Guidelines. The recommended motion there is to recommend that council approve the public spaces special events application and guidelines. Counselor Heather Hatfield, seconded by Counselor Cleveland. Go ahead, Counselor.
Sure. I have a question, and I apologize for not asking it actually long before this. Things have been kind of busy, and so it kind of went past me. But this public spaces special event app, it's fantastic. It kind of coordinates everything, and it puts everything together. But one thing it mentions, it mentions buskering in public spaces and the fact that there's no permit needed. But we have spots, and perhaps if Natalie could come up, I have a question about, like, for example, if somebody wants to book the coal shed, how does one do it? It's not really clear in here. Do we call, would it be you that would be called?
Yeah, so typically, anyone that wants to busker, they don't need to have a permit, but they need to register with our department.
Right.
Just so that we can review the rules of engagement. And then as long as we know where they are, that those are permitted with whatever the guidelines, setbacks, et cetera, then they go ahead and we monitor if there's a complaint.
Okay, so when it comes to buskering, perhaps there should be a bit of a definitionist because buskering, in your mind, you picture buskering as, you know, setting up on the corner and playing, perhaps, in one of those lobster carts or that kind of thing. If someone wants to play, say, over at Frost Park, is that buskering, or is that making a booking for that space?
That's buskering, and we actually have a bylaw. It's called the Street vendors' Bylaw that actually defines buskering and the process for that. So this is special events.
Like parades.
Yeah, so we do have both. And so the purpose is, when this is passed, is for us to bring those things together so people know what is for public spaces, and then the other bylaws as it relates to licenses and other street permits.
Okay. One final question, and then I'll leave you be. And that is, like, for example, if someone, I don't know, books a street parade, for example, does that automatically go on to the events page that we have set up? How does that part of it work?
So the answer is yes. Once it's approved by the town, which there are other departments, so Traffic Authority, all of the other players are still part of it, once it's done, it gets notified to Communications, and Communications is currently responsible for updating the community events calendar. And then it also gets notified to YASTA so they can put it on theirs as well.
Cool. Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Go ahead, CAO.
Your Worship, I just wanted to give a shout-out to Natalie, and for coordinating, I guess that's a huge amount of work, and a number of other staff worked with her on it, but pulling that all together was a very good, a significant piece of work, and done very well.
Thanks, Natalie. Okay, Destruction of Documents. The recommended motion there is to recommend that council approve the destruction of documents in the attached list. Don't destroy any housing documents, Jeffrey. Go ahead.
Your Worship, before we destroy documents, we have to get council approval. That's just the process. And of particular note here, there are no housing documents within these files. I want to point out, because it is the most significant thing on the list, it is the last thing on the list, all records of the Southwest Shore Development Authority. So we have been the holder of the SWASTA documents since SWASTA's wind-up, bankruptcy, investigations, and charges. We've held on the documents. As some of you will know, that I think the last matter related to the whole SWASTA experience, I think we're at the end of that. When we have ink on paper, we will, with your blessing, destroy the documents.
Because when you say, "I think," I'm not letting go of that yet.
No, until there's.
And nothing else is going to pop up? Wow. Okay. Look at the date on that. Oh, no, that was the yearly detail register, 2003. Okay, so can I have a motion to destroy these pending approval? Go ahead, Counselor Lesser.
I'm just looking through, I think, all the dates. It's seven years that we need to keep financial. Is that correct? And it looks like all of them are obviously past that. Is, including the last one, it just doesn't have a date, is that, would that also be? I'm just thinking of how many, are there things in those documents of the last one that have happened since financially?
No, that event, the wind-up with SWASTA was around 2010, so we're a solid 12 years past that. Any documents that were generated in the interim, you know, would have been between municipalities. SWASTA, though, had ended as an entity, and so we're talking about the entities' records that we're destroying.
Good. Okay. Go ahead, Counselor Bell. Oops. It's all right.
Thank you, Your Worship. No objections, but just an observation or, or a question, I guess, with regard to historical significance? And is there any, is there any historical significance in these records? And is there, is there any, um, interest in reaching out to the Historical Society to see if they would like to be the holder of these records? I have, I'm just asking the question. I have no idea.
Give it a go.
Uh, I, it hadn't occurred to me, honestly. Looking at the documents, there's some things that would have to be removed and destroyed. Uh, there's, there's things like, uh, check registers, there's financial documents-
Yeah.
-that, uh, you know, paycheck information, that kind of stuff, that should be destroyed. It's personal information. Uh, as far as reports, minutes, uh, that kind of thing, um, we could do that. We could, we could do that. They, I'm not sure that they, that they hold a lot of value. Maybe some interest, uh, for somebody down the road, you know, doing a, doing, having a look back at what happened in Yarmouth in the, in the nineteen eighties and nineties and early two thousands. You know, there's certainly some information there. And, and I would never say best, based on some of our recent activities, that old records carry no value.
That's right.
But, uh, you know, if, if that's, if that's the wish, that we make that approach to see if somebody wants to be, somebody else wants to be the custodian of these documents, all that will mean is that we'll have to go through them and remove any of the, any of the more sensitive items. And, and again, the sensitivity is only around personal information. It's not around subject matter.
Okay. What do you think, folks? I mean, we don't know what's in there of value, but- Okay. Go ahead.
Uh, Your Worship, can I make a motion that the CAO contact the, uh, Yarmouth Historical Society and Archives to ascertain the level of interest they might have in, uh, securing the publicly accessible parts of those, uh, documents and, and report back to council?
So, Lindsey, oh, look, we've got an engineer sneaking in the back door. Lindsey, did we make a motion to destroy them? We didn't vote, but did we? No, but did we? We haven't yet? Okay, I, I asked because I usually get a motion on the floor before we discuss, but I didn't remember who made those. Okay, so, so the, so Bell's is the first motion on this one. Okay? All right. I'm good with that. Go ahead, Counselor Dears.
So, I'm just wondering, are we gonna follow, is that gonna be a two-part motion? So, if there is no interest by the Historical Society, then we would proceed to destruction?
I would amend the motion to include the second part. Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Go ahead, Camp, uh, Counselor Lesser, and then CAO.
Without getting into too much detail, um, there are some times that errors were made that, um, going back over records might work in our favor. So, like I said, not going into too, a lot of details. I guess, with your professional judgment, would you say there's anything here that would fit into that category? Or that could?
Who knows? You know, who knows? I, I'm a little doubtful. I mean, there's probably some interesting stuff in there. And, again, to somebody who's, who's, you know, I don't know who would be doing a project, but if somebody's doing project or research at some point, what was going on around, you know, business development or whatever in this community in that period of time, there are reports in there. There are reports in those boxes that, that might be of interest. You know, if the, if the Historical Society is interested in them, I, I can say that when I first started here, um, I was invited, I and council were invited to the, to the archives, because prior to Ray Glant leaving, uh, he took a lot of documents, boxes of documents, and gave them to Historical Society. And they, the reason we were invited over is they needed a shelf to put them on, and their shelves are not cheap. And so, that's one part of the story, and we did provide money to, to provide one of those shelves that should go ahead and get it moves along. Recently, on this, you, you know from our recent meeting that I'm on a, Lindsey is, Lindsey's doing a lot of work around finding, uh, old documents, uh, to, to help to fill in blanks on a, on a matter. Well, her recent, most recent, um, inquiry was with the archives. You know, what is, what is on those shelves that might be relevant to this search? And there are a few things. And so, tomorrow, as early as tomorrow, Lindsey's going to be, uh, visiting the archives and looking through some of those old files. So, you never know, uh, what someone might be looking for. So, I'd, I'd say we offer it, and, uh, if they're up for it, then we will, instead of destroying, uh, move the documents to their custody.
Are we good? Ready for the vote? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Correspondent, YASTA Nova Scotia Music Week, the recommended motion there is to recommend that council provide a letter of support and a financial commitment of ten thousand dollars for each year YASTA is successful in hosting Nova Scotia Music Week. Neil, second it. I'm just looking at the, for every year YASTA is successful. So, you don't have to keep coming back?
Yes. That is what? Because the discussions that are being held are for two years.
Oh.
We're looking at and putting a bid in for 2023 and 2024.
Okay. Thank you for that. I've, I've never seen a motion like that, so.
Yeah, up two. Yeah, we should put a maximum on it.
Oh, God, no. No, we're not gonna put a maximum. We're gonna take all we can get. Okay, so, did you second that? Okay.
Yeah, two things that I, that I appreciate here is that I don't think that amount has increased over the time that they applied for funds years ago. So, uh, it's a very modest ask, I think. And secondly, I think it's noteworthy that the, that event typically takes place in the off-season. So, it fills hotel rooms and fills restaurants, um, at a time when they're most needed. So, it's a very good, good, um, event to have.
Perfect, yeah. Go ahead, Deputy.
Just a small request. I know sometimes we get these letters to fund things or whatnot, and then when the events come around, uh, the, um, I guess the information that I find out about it is on Facebook or whatnot. So, if we could be requested that some more information come to council directly and just so we know what's going on personally and not have to go find it on the internet or anywhere else, that would be greatly appreciated.
Sounds good. Okay, anyone else? All right, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Uh, presentation request, Yarmouth Golf and Country Club, and the recommended motion there is that council invite Phil Mooney, Richard Herbert, and Colin Frazier to present at September Committee of the Hole for the Yarmouth Golf and Country Club. Looking for a motion. Deputy Mayor, seconded by Counselor Heather. Any discussion there? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Fishing Gear Coalition of Atlantic Canada, a letter of support. Our recommended motion is to recommend that council provide a letter of support to the Fishing Gear Coalition of Atlantic Canada for their DFO Ghost Gear Fund application. So, there's no financing involved for us, it's just we're providing a letter of support. Go ahead, CAO.
Your Worship, this, this appears to be late, and, and I was told it was late. There was a deadline to make their application, but I don't think a letter of support, uh, is ever a bad thing to send, even if the application's already been submitted, they can follow it up. I don't know if it's been successful or not, but, um, what they're, what they're proposing to do is, is interesting, and, uh, say, it doesn't cost us anything to provide a letter of support, and, uh, it's in line with, with issues that we have.
Okay.
It was, sorry, I should also say, as you can see from the email and the deadline, there was not much time to deal with it, and there wasn't a council meeting to bring it to, so.
Good. Counselor Dears?
Yeah, and I note that they're, um, they're asking for in-kind support, um, by the Waste Park, Solid Waste Park, providing information as to when the project begins and, uh, get that information via social media. I also see a role for, um, Waste Check in here, and so, we'll be bringing that to the table at Waste Check to make sure that they're involved in the education and public information component.
Good. Okay, so, did somebody make the motion? All right, so we need a motion. Counselor Bell? Okay, thank you. Did you have, did you want to share anything? You're good?
Yep, I'm good.
Okay, so moved by Counselor Bell, seconded by Deputy Mayor. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Youth Advisory Group, the recommended motion there is, no, we're, yeah, I see that. Equity Diversity and Inclusion Coordinator, the recommended motion is to recommend that council support applications for funding for an Equity Diversity and Inclusion Coordinator for the town of Yarmouth. Go ahead, CAO.
Your Worship, I'm bringing this forward, uh, today. The timing of this is, is awkward because we've, we've only been, uh, a month or so past approving our budget, but, uh, I, it, last, last week, Jerry and I attended the AMA conference, and a couple of the sessions dealt with equity, diversity, and inclusion, what's going on in, in Halifax municipality specifically, and, uh, and I'm aware of some activities, some, some very positive things going on in Kings County. This is an area in which, uh, we haven't put any, um, specific targeted resources, and I think we have a long way to go. We've, we're not horrible on these things, but you know what? When you, when you, when you put yourself, and this is what happened at the conference, is that through a couple sessions and some storytelling, uh, some of us who, um, and I'll call myself out as a white male sitting there, listening to the stories and understanding the, um, the perspective of others who aren't as privileged, uh, it, it, it is heartbreaking. It is, uh, embarrassing. It is, um, and it, it was a call to action for me, uh, in my role, and I think I don't want to wait until next year's budget to say, now we can do something as far as bringing somebody in who can lead our education, lead our engagement, and lead our action on, on equity, diversity, and inclusion. This isn't a short-term thing.
No.
But it's very important. And so, I'm asking for your support to, to seek funding, and if funding is found, and, I have some ideas where I'm looking, um, then, you know, we'll have to talk about reallocating some money within our operating budget, but, uh, to, to match up very likely. So, but I want to get going. I think it's, it's, it's way past due, uh, and, um, so, again, I'm just looking for your support to, uh, to take some steps to try to begin to address this.
Thank you for, um, just the upfront, honest, open explanation of that. I, I fully support it. Fully support it. Okay. Go ahead, Counselor Bell.
Do you need a motion?
I do.
I would like to make a motion that council direct the CAO to investigate establishing that position, the diversity and inclusion position.
Good. Seconded by Deputy Mayor. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Counselor.
I just, uh, thank you, Your Worship. I, I just want to, uh, to, just to frame it in terms of, um, you know, we, none of us intend to be discriminatory or unwelcoming, but systems, the institutions, uh, that have been built in that form, and we're seeing this everywhere.
Absolutely.
Unless we are intentional in our determination to, uh, evaluate and reflect, and, uh, then, then the, the institutions continue to create the same barriers. So, I fully support this initiative. Thank you.
Okay. Did you, are you good?
Yeah, I, yeah, sorry, I got my light still on. I just want to share a story that, 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 that I heard, or I guess a question-and-answer that I overheard, or, you know, during, during one of our sessions. Senator Don Oliver was one of the, one of, one of the speakers, and, uh, he was, he was very compelling, as, as, if you've ever heard him, uh, or spent time with him, I'm sure you'd find the same. But, uh, one of the questions was from one of my colleagues, the CAO, and, and what she questioned was, is, well, you know, we are open to, you know, we recognize that we need more diversity in our organization, and we put out job ads, but we don't get the applications. We can't hire people if they don't apply. And, and what he said to that was, 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 you know, that, it was one of those moments where, where things kind of hit you. He said, you know, why would they apply? Why, why would somebody from, you know, a minority community apply to a job when they've been told so many times, no, not even when you're qualified, not even when you're the best applicant? Why would they put themselves through it? And so, that, to me, spoke to barriers that we don't necessarily see or don't, haven't thought of, is that it isn't that we, every time, it's not us personally, it is the institutions that are, that are, that have said no and have caused, you know, have been unfair. And we, we are, if we're gonna be true in our intention, we have to be intentional. We have to be engaging. We have to reach out, and we have to recognize that, that one system of, of, uh, soliciting applications, whether it's for committees or jobs or what have you, isn't gonna work. We've got to, we've got to have people who are focused on the work, who can educate the rest of us, bring us changes in the way that, that we approach things, and, and create, create connections with, with communities that frankly, we don't have the connections with.
Yep, agree. I agree. Okay, we good? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Youth Advisory Group, the recommended motion there is to recommend that council endorse the establishment of a youth advisory group to provide input and feedback to town staff on planning matters, and that once established, one or two of the youth representatives be appointed to Planning Advisory Committee to advise council on planning documents and planning matters generally. Okay? Go ahead, there, Counselor Cleveland.
I think this is a really exciting thing, and it was brought up to me by our new planner, Tony Morris, who I believe actually wrote the, uh, the summary that we have in front of us. I would like to make that motion.
Okay. Seconded by Counselor Hatfield. Did, did you want to speak to that, Tony?
No, I just came up with those questions.
Okay, so, so, um, I had a question. So, the youth age, sixteen to twenty-four, is there a reason for that?
So, I looked around, like, if there was, like, a standard definition of youth, and there really isn't, but the federal government, for a lot of their programs, uses that age range, just because it's university age as well.
Okay.
And I just didn't want to limit it to, you know, the typical sixteen to eighteen kind of thing.
Okay.
So, it was to cast the net a little wider.
Okay. See, I guess I was sitting here thinking it needs to be cast wider, because, even wider. But you guys, I mean, I'm, I'm good with this, but, you know, like, eve- even up to twenty-nine or thirty, because this is, um, the, these are the folks that are, I say they're our future, they're our, they're our present, but they're our future as well. So, um, I guess I look at the Planning Advisory Committee, and, and it's not filled with youth. That's an understatement, right? It's, it's not. And, um, and that's sad, because all these decisions that are made- And that's sad, because all these decisions that are made, it's their future, that we're, so I guess I was, I was thinking about, you know, up to the age 30, however, you know, we can, we could do a matrix or something at planning, for all of them, actually, for all our committees, and have that matrix include, you know, and to Jeff's point, you know, what we were doing about the EDI piece, which is not a piece, it's a culture, it's a, it needs to be ingrained in who we are and what we do. But yeah, I just look at some of our tables, and I think the experience is there, but those fresh eyes is missing. And it's, this is a good time to recognize that, I guess, so. Go ahead, Counselor Dyer.
So two things. Definition of youth, and I agree. One of the organizations I'm involved with defines youth as up to 25, and another organization that I was previously involved with identified youth up to the age of 29. So there is some variations out there. What I'd like to comment on is that I began to look at the, when I read this through, I was a little bit more intrigued by the option two. Because although it's nice to have youth involved in planning, I wonder what their opinions would be on other aspects of council business.
Yeah.
And so, they used to have, like, a youth shadow council that really reflected on all of the issues that come before council, and if they have an opinion, offer that opinion. So I'm more, I guess, leaning towards the advisory committee to council that would offer opinions on a wide range of topics rather than just planning. Thank you.
Because I had, it's funny, I said to Jeff, like, that's, we have the discussion around is that the youth council, but a council makes their own decision, the advisory committee advises council, which is what we're after, but how to get them, maybe we take care of this piece of business, and then at another meeting, have that whole conversation, because we need to have it. The voices need to be heard.
These are also our future councils.
They are. Yeah. Okay. So are there any questions for Tony?
I just.
Oh, sorry. I did have your light on.
My light's on.
Yeah.
Back to the age piece, I guess my thought on this was even going younger than 16. So going to, say, 14 or 15, I think it's really important to capture those, the youth at a younger, younger age. It's, I see this as an opportunity for them to make career choices going forward, because they'll be on a committee such as planning or whatever, and be able to say, oh, this is, this is interesting, like, I didn't know this existed, right? Or whatever committee it is. And it just opens their horizon to other things. Or if you're only getting them at 16, or 18, or 20, they've kind of made those decisions typically in life. So I just think it's an opportunity, I'd like to see us capture, you know, capture them at a younger age, and that would be such an asset for them to have on a resume going forward, right? So when they're applying for jobs and stuff, and be able to say that they sat on such a committee. So that would be, my thing is not so much, you know, an older level, but is that youth, is to give them that opportunity, and that learning experience.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
I agree with Counselor Hatfield, what she just said. I think that you capture them young, you got them. And I also like the idea of to 29 as well, so, you know, then you got them for a long time. I often have discussions in my office and with kids about just kind of what's going on, and you'd be surprised how quickly, that if they didn't know, they're hooked into. And then, oh, well, hey, what happened with that? And before you know it, they're sitting at this table. So I think it's our job as counselors to make sure our youth, you know, to push them forward and make sure they get here, and I think our planner, I think this is a great idea. So thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you. Counselor LeSser?
Just wondering if 11A and 11B can also be mixed a bit with having, to make sure the youth advisory group includes members of diverse communities, like in the way we set up the matrix, to make sure that all areas of town and all cultures, I guess, are represented within that group, so that people all feel they have a say. I don't know when we advertise, this might be more for the CAO, going back to 11A, but when we advertise positions, do we ever create positions that are for equity hires only, to start?
We have.
Okay. So we do that in education, and it's, that's worked out quite well for us. It is still hard to attract people to come to the area for the same reasons mentioned above, but by 11B, if we were to try to make sure that we have people of diversity in the youth advisory group, that might open the door down the road to some of those people actually applying for the jobs. And I think what Counselor Hatfield said about 14, if we, if they were to be appointed, for example, four years, and they're 14, they, some of these kids might be off to university or college before their time's up. So I think, like, at 16, they wouldn't be able to probably even serve, like, a really long term. So I think I like the idea of going to 14 as well.
So I think, I think we all agree. I mean, the EDI has to be in everything we do, and we're taking those steps. And we have to, and we started to do this. We started to do the matrices, right? Like, we started to do those pieces. So we just have to be intentional and aware, and make sure that we're covering off in a manner that speaks to what we're trying to accomplish. So what do you think of 14 to 29?
I'm open to, again, like I said, there's no consistency, so the 16 to 24 was kind of just.
No, no, and it was great.
So if we want to do 14 to 29, I'm open.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, it's kind of arbitrary. You kind of pick a number and go.
Oh, yeah.
But I agree with Counselor Hatfield, that the younger you go, the better. And, you know, I remember as a 25-year-old or a 26-year-old, already having kids and a family, so I wasn't thinking that way. But if you want to make it, if you want to cast a net, let's cast it wide. So let's go, like, 14 to 29. I mean, that's quite a, there's quite a, that's two generations, in a way.
It is.
You know, it's two generations that you're dealing with, in two different senses. And neither sense are perspectives, I'm sorry, is a more accurate word, are ones that we're necessarily hearing. So I think it's only good.
Yeah. Okay. So did we make a motion, Lindsey?
I think so.
Okay. You did. And who seconded it? Okay. So if you made the motion, are you okay with, oh, we didn't have to put the age in there? Do we need to put the age in there? Hmm?
Yeah.
Let's do that. 14 to 29, let's just add it in. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, just revise the motion.
Whoever seconded that? We're good with that? Is anybody not good with it? So when Lindsey goes back and sees who. Okay. All right. Any further discussion on this one? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you, Tony. Okay, grants discussion? Okay, there's no attachment, but we just wanted to just bring it here so we understand where we are with regard to grants, and we did make some changes recently, I believe. But the intention of the policy just needs to be clear. We just need to make sure as a council, we're clear. So there's a difference between late applications, which Lindsey, and Lindsey just recently, for one example, sent out an email and said, you know, this is what our policy says. We don't accept late applications. There's a difference between that and the unforeseen circumstance, or unforeseen, so, you know, Frank has a baseball team that wins, I don't know, they win provincials, and they need funding from us to help get them to nationals, but they had no idea they were going to win. So something like that. Do they need a couple thousand dollars, and we have a contingency for it? So I think that was the difference. And we just need to make sure at the table here, we're clear, because we always, I know we want to give to everything, but we can't. We simply can't. We have to follow our own rules, and so we just want to have that discussion at the table to see where everybody's, if everybody's good. Okay, Counselor LeSser, you're up.
I think another part of the grants discussion that we all struggle with is, we get so much in ask, and so little money to use. And it's not that we don't want to use more money, but every dollar we put in is a dollar from the taxpayer's pocket. So the balance of, like, do we want to increase the amount of money we're giving for grants to get more people happy, or do we want to try to give it out to more groups and lower the amount? I think, like, you know, sometimes we get grant requests for, you know, three or four times what we're even, we're giving everybody. And then by the time we give them a share of it, because we're trying to spread it out, it's insulting to some of the groups that we're giving such little amounts. And I'm just wondering if there's, you know, I know the grants have been around for a long time, and I'm just wondering if there's any appetite to have the rules set out ahead of time, so we don't have people applying for, like, a hundred thousand dollars when we just, we don't even have it. So, you know, set a limit of how much you can apply for. Just because I think it's almost setting, setting everybody up for failure when somebody's applying for a hundred thousand, and we don't have a hundred thousand to give to everybody. And we know for sure we're going to be not giving much to that group in comparison to what they're asking for. So I don't know if that's something that people are interested in looking at, but I think a limit of what they're asking for might help, you know, guide these decisions a bit.
Go ahead, Counselor Dyer.
Yeah, you know, I think the policy has to be clear, but it also has to be consistent.
Exactly.
And I did like the idea of having a contingency set aside for the very reason that your worship has stated, that there are evolving circumstances that we may not be aware of early in the year. My understanding was, though, that there was some notification to those that had applied this year, that if they didn't, that they succeeded, grossly exceeded the amount. I believe there was, there may have been feedback provided to them. I'm not sure if that's the case or not, but I think in the future, if that happens, and we have a $100,000 ask, that we just be clear and consistent, and go back and tell them that, look, this is our, this is our pocket of money, and this is all we can, we can do. So, you know, this application probably isn't suitable for an application of the town for support. I think that's being clear and consistent as well. But other than that, I think the policy works well. I think, I can't think of a better way of allotting the funds that we have than what we did earlier this year.
Okay. Anyone else? Go ahead, Deputy.
I find the grants part of things, one of the hardest things that we have to do, because as Counselor LeSser said, you want to give to everybody, and you don't want to be disrespectful to the efforts of, you know, that our community members put in. But I guess on the flip side of that, these are meant to be helper grants. These aren't the do-all, say-all, we're the main sponsor for some things that go on as well. I know I took a look at our Giles policy, they do things a little bit differently, and I know Modi does it as well. And I'm just wondering, like, you know, sometimes there's caps on things, or, you know, if you're, if you're applying for, say, a hall, you only get $1,500, but if it's an event, it may be $5,000 and things like that. I'm wondering if there's best practices that are, that tend to happen with municipalities that maybe that we could look into, that strengthen our policy a little bit as well, just to make it easier on us when it does come down, because it would be nice to know, you know, well, regardless of what you're applying for, it's five grand max. And as Counselor LeSser said, the ability to spread that money amongst more is kind of what you want to do, but without, you know, disrespecting those people who do do a good job. So I always find that hard. That's the one juggle that I've always had since we've been council. Be great to give all the money you can, but at the end of the day, you know, we're kind of stuck, and we're always thankful for the efforts that people foot forward, and it's not always reflective in the money that we can give, but it's not an endless pot, so we do what we can.
Go ahead, Counselor Hatfield. No, you have to just, that's all right. I know somebody else that used to do that.
Believe it, was it our?
Didn't fall far from the tree, eh? I took lessons. In all honesty, he would leave his microphone on the whole meeting. And we loved it.
Thank you for your patience, your worship. Oh, dear. I just, my observation with regard to the grants policy is that I have a difficulty having language in a policy that's not adopted, you know, that we don't follow. So it just feels to me that we, if we're, if we're not going to follow a policy, then it should be removed, and we should ask ourselves, well, maybe it shouldn't be there. And I'm talking now about a requirement for financial information from those who are seeking grants before the town. And our policy is that, and it's very clear in the application, that in order for it to be considered, we require a budget, and we require a financial statement. And time and time again, this year, while we were going, I was finding myself asking, well, where's the budget? Just saying that you've got a budget of $40,000 or $30,000 or what, that is not a budget. So I have to know where the money that I'm giving is going to go, and how much money in the bank the organization has, who is asking me to take taxpayer dollars and give it to them. And I'm not uncomfortable with having that policy on the books, but not if we don't follow it, because then it's not fair. You have organizations that do their due diligence and provide us with information, and then you have organizations who say, yeah, no, just not going to give it to you. And so that's my problem. So if we are not comfortable with asking for financial information and budgets from the organizations, then we should probably remove that from the policy. But if we do feel it's important, I think that we should require it. Thank you.
Okay. So when you say, I agree 1,000% with you, by the way. There are rules in place, and they aren't there for any frivolous reasons. They're there to protect us, to protect the organization, so that they know they have to provide this. When you say if we're uncomfortable, my head, and forgive me for saying this, but my head goes to, are we uncomfortable saying no to somebody because they didn't do what they required? And if that's the case, then we probably, if it's any one of us, then we shouldn't just be filling out the grants application period. If we're not comfortable saying no to an organization when they've been clearly advised, this is the information that we need. This is not for, and this is just me, this is not a frivolous pot of money that we say, oh, we've got free, let's just give you a few, and give you a few, and we're going to give you some, and I feel really bad that I can't give more to you. But, I mean, I guess when I sit down and I look at it, I also look, and I guess it goes to the piece of what is council's job as a whole, and it's to make the difficult decisions, but it's also to input our values, and we've always said that, it's to input our values into the equation. So, you know, Counselor Dyer's may value one, and make sure that they get funds, and Counselor Hatfield values another, and they may get a little bit more because of that. And it evens out, because our values are put on the table, and that's what happens. But when we sit at a table, and we are, I hope nobody takes this wrong, because it's not, and it's just in general, I just see, when we're afraid to say no, then we're in trouble. I think it's part of our job to have the courage to say, no, it doesn't fit, no, we've asked you for the information, and you haven't provided it. And I understand that these organizations need funds, but we have to follow our rules, because it's just, you said it, it's so unfair for the other ones that do it. And then we've seen in the past that we've said, you need to provide us with funds, and gone out and actually solicited the groups to, you need to pass this in, or we can't give you, and it's a fight. So either we, either we sit down and say, here's the rules, follow them, or there's no money, or I don't, I don't know what happens. I know that's, I'm a little bit. I know that that's, I'm a little bit passionate about this, because I guess I I get in trouble when I say, no, we're not giving them money, because I I sound heartless, but it's it's, again, we got to go back, this is taxpayers' money we're giving out. And and I'd love some of my taxpayers to come to me and say, why'd you give them money? They didn't do what they were supposed to do. That's not, that's just not right. So I I'm having a hard time with this. I just would follow the rules and just say no with the easily. Go ahead, Councilor Lesser.
I think I agree with everything that's being said in in terms of following the rules. And I I know I didn't, I haven't voted, my votes would not necessarily agree with what I'm, that that's how I value, what I value. But, you know, I see sometimes applications come in, I see the value of the application, but then I think, well, they've got, they've been able to get the money before, and we haven't really been tight on it. So to me, I think it's more about redoing the grants application process and getting it out, you know, if we can do it by the fall, getting it out to every organization that's ever applied, getting it out as much as we can on social media and newspaper, whatever, and say, these are the rules, and, you know, this is the maximum you can apply for, this is how much money we have in in total to spend. So we're not getting, and if you don't pass it in by the timeline, like if we're, I think if all of us are consistent in saying we're not, we're not going to break the rules prior to the grants even coming up, I think it's much easier. But I think where we're finding the challenge is that we all, we know it's been done before, I guess. And until we actually say this is, like, we are going to follow, if it's if it's a rule and it's a policy, we should be following it. But knowing that it's happened in the past, then it looks like we're the bad guys not doing it. So I think it's just a matter of getting that policy really firm and getting out to all the stakeholders well in advance, so we're not even getting, so those discussions don't even have to happen. They they know what's required ahead of time, and we're not getting the application even brought to council at that point.
So I agree. So a letter to to those folks that are applying and anyone that we think might, I mean, there might be a bigger reach out there than than the list that we're getting, that says, here's, you can look up the policy, but here's the rules. There you go. It's it's and 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 in the grant application, it says you have to do this, right? So it's clear. But we could still write the letter that says, because I hear what you're saying, we're drawing a line in the sand, if if we don't get A, B, and C, then we can't, unfortunately, we can't support your request. But we all, I mean, we've got seven people making decisions, and we have to have the guts to to stick to that, I guess is what I'm saying. Because when it comes to the council table and and, you know, publicly, we're taped and and everything, like, for some reason, sometimes it's just, you know, I I must be, I just have no problem saying no, but I I agree, we need to get it nailed down. Sorry, go ahead, Councilor Dairs.
So I'm going to go back to my original statement that we have to be clear and consistent. I will say that this last year was difficult, and we were just emerging from two summers of nonactivity. And there were there were groups that that weren't aware in in January that they were actually going to have an event in June. And so that that needs to be understood, and that that provided some additional pressure at the time that we're making these decisions. But I'm not sure I'm comfortable with putting the onus on staff to to anticipate who might apply and get the information. So I think, you know, I think what we need to do is clearly advertise through social media and through the town website and Facebook page, these are the rules, this is the amount of money that we're dealing with, and you you need to get your application in by the deadline and leave it at that.
So so before you turn your light out, let me ask you this question. So so the organization that doesn't know they're going to have, they don't know if they're going to have an event. So Jeff, I think we just, I don't know if we discussed it, or I might have asked you the question today. Can they apply and then say, we don't need the funds? You know what I mean?
I don't see any problem with that. I think we have to recognize, though, as you mentioned earlier, that there's there's organizations out there that that aren't aware of the fact that they are going to have an event until after the the application deadline. So, you know, that's why I think we reserved a bit of money for those evolving circumstances.
We did, and and we called them unforeseen versus versus like late or something like that. But I guess what I'm saying is, so one we received recently that we have to make a decision on, they just had paperwork and they were waiting to hear back, but that's that's still a late application, because can we help them understand that they can apply, but if the event that they're working on doesn't happen, then they return the funds? Does that sound fair? Jerry, is that fair or sensible or? Yeah, exactly.
If we know an event's being held in December, we, you know, we can cut a check in March, February, kind of thing.
So CFest, for example, I mean, we know CFest happens, so it's a good example to use because it's an easy one. But what if CFest is struggling, they're going, I don't know if we can get like a team together to to do what we want to do, so we might have to cancel CFest, which is, it won't happen. So it's a good example, it's an easy example. So they don't apply. What I'm saying is, they should apply, and then if it doesn't happen, right? There's only a couple like that, right? In case something happens, they can, but but they still need to apply, otherwise they're late. Am I wrong? Go ahead there, Councilor Lesser.
This won't be popular, but.
Neither am I.
I'm thinking of like, when you apply for grants, like if you're a teacher, you can apply for a PD PD grant. It used to be you apply once a year, and then people didn't do a lot of stuff at the beat, like right after the grants were given out, because they had to wait a year to do it. And not that I would ever want to go through this process two times in a year, but I'm wondering if there's some way that we can, instead of just taking late applications, if we could somehow have like two separate deadlines and a pot of money for one and a pot of, so I guess what I am saying is to do it twice a year, which which frightens me. But I'm, if if organizations up to this point have applied and not followed the rules and consistently have gotten money back or money from grants, I I still think, like, the wording has to somehow on, like, when we get the word out, has to be like, we're sticking to everything this year, like, the rules are the rules. And I know it's, if it's written, you think you are sticking to the rules, but it seems like the last two years, and maybe it's just because of COVID, but I'm taking from the conversation that it probably existed some before COVID as well. But I think we need, I think we need to have a a review of the policy and try to figure out the best way of evenly giving out that money and not sending people up for disappointment before they even apply. I guess I'm just rambling now, so I'm going to shut my mic off.
No, you're you're actually making, you're making, you're making sense. I I think the policy, I I think, it's just, the policy is good. What's not good is that we keep breaking the rules. So two things need to happen. We need to get word out clearly that here are the rules, and you get the rules with each each grant application, here's your deadlines, here's the rules, no, we're not breaking any of the rules. And secondly, at this table, we have to agree that we're not breaking the rules, right? It's not going to be, well, you know, but, right? I mean, there might be some buts. There's always a but. Anyway, sorry. Deputy Mayor.
I agree with Councilor Lesser. I know there is another, I don't know if it's Argyle or Modi, but I think they do two rounds as well. Councilor Cleveland and I were just having a chat, and we definitely agree that the one round is hard enough. But if it's really about what works best, and I'm also wondering with what Councilor Lesser said, if it wouldn't be best to maybe review the policy to see what best practices are in in other municipalities, and if there are a few things that could could help things be more fair or help us in a decision, it might be the right way to go.
Okay, Councilor Cleveland?
Thank you, your worship. Couple of things, yeah, I agree too, but here's the thing. I've always said, since I've been here, that when there's a process, there's a couple of thoughts here, but but the first one is, when it comes to this process, there's there's a limited amount of funds. And often, through this grant process, you're comparing apples and oranges. For example, and we talk a lot about how we all bring our personal values or biases, for that matter, into things. Well, as everybody knows, I'm really into events. But often, in this process, you're comparing or trying to divide that money between an event and maybe a van, or an event and and an organization who needs a roof, or whatever that might be. And in all honesty, I'd love to see, and I know we have limited funds anyway, but I'd love to see a division where you have a fund that, okay, this money, we're going to designate this much to help out some events, this much is for other things. So that's just one thing, and and you can agree or disagree with that, that's fine. The other part is about the rule breaking thing. And yeah, we've we've made a lot of exceptions because COVID has left everybody just unsure. But the thing that bothers me a little bit is, again, you go back to the fact that we have, we have a limited amount of money here. And say, somebody, somebody submits, and they've always submitted, and they didn't follow the rules. They didn't do the the proper budgeting, they they prob, you know, it wasn't done right. But we gave them money because we felt that they deserved the money or should have the money, or it was an important event. The next person followed all the rules, and maybe it was something less sexy, and they didn't get it. What kind of a message are we sending? You know, the person who followed the rules is the one perhaps that we ignored. And so consistency, it is, it has to be one way or no way. And so really, we have reached that point. Now, I'm the biggest criminal when it comes to ignoring deadlines and stuff when I when I felt something was necessary. But and and it's because of the COVID, you know, the way COVID has been. But we have to reach a point where we have to draw that line and say, okay, if you're not going to submit it the way we're asking for it, we're not going to consider it because this person did. They did what they were asked. So they deserve more consideration for that, for following that, as opposed to someone who didn't follow those rules. Just my money's worth.
I agree. The other the other thing is, there's applications that don't need money. They they simply don't need the money, and and we're in the habit of saying, and and that's, again, that's a that's a values thing. You know, if somebody thinks it's important to put the money on the table, but we have had applicants here where we've said, do you need the funds? No, but I just applied because it's it's there. Like, why why do we do that? Why do we feel the need to write that number down? So it goes to, again, I keep saying the values, it's, and it's, and it's, that whole thing, what you're saying about events, events are important. I I don't think it's because you like events that you're putting the money down there. You know the value that events bring to this community, and without it, we're in a mess, right? So so when I say values, I'm not just saying personal, my personal feelings. I'm saying, we know at this table, because we talk to people and we're in the community, why something is important, so we put our numbers down, right? So you're you're bang on there. But when we write, you know, numbers, so we, when I write a big number down because I don't want to hurt someone's feelings, I'm not doing my job. I'll just leave it at that. It's hard, but it's, anyway, go ahead.
Last, I I promise. I I don't disagree with Councilor Lesser's way of thinking, and I don't think policy review is ever a waste of time.
Never.
So maybe we should really look at that and review that policy. I also wonder if in consideration of that, that, you know, if somebody does submit in advance of the deadline, they submit an application that's not complete, should they receive just a rejection notice saying you're not, you're being rejected, your application is not complete, and this is why? Now, I don't know if that's, but perhaps that should be considered during the review. But I think a policy review is, as I say, never a waste of time. So I'd make that motion.
Okay, you're making the motion for the policy review, seconded by the deputy mayor. Okay, go ahead, Zia.
Yeah, one of the things that occurs to me is, you know, we, staff don't want to be getting into making judgment calls about the completeness of an application so much. But one of the things that I've experienced fairly recently online is that trying to fill out an online form or a survey or whatnot, if I don't complete certain fields, I can't submit the darn thing. And and so what I'm what I'm thinking is, is if we could have a grants portal, and I don't know if that, you know, when it comes to accessibility, that might not be, you know, the 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 best approach, but it's an approach to say, you know what, here's a convenient way, your convenience and your jammies at your computer, you can fill out the grant application form and not accept it if if certain fields are not are not completed. So that's one way that we can vet, and and we wouldn't have to necessarily, you know, screen them as staff. Ones that come in traditional method of filling out the paper, then then there would be a process there. But I I think if we can encourage people to do the online submission and have the portal set up to encourage a complete application, then at least that part is done.
It is. Or we can decide this at another meeting, because we'll just, we can't be here all night. But or just get the word out that says, you know what, we're only accepting online applications. And then you're right, when they can't fill that in, it's like me applying for anything online. If I don't fill in my phone number, I'm not, it's not going to let me go any further. So then we get all the information, people's feelings aren't hurt, except for the people that don't like to fill things out online, but welcome to 2022, right? So there's help with that. There there is help with that. Just disagreeing. We are, okay, go ahead, Deputy.
I like that idea of the online, the only thing is, I I think of the seniors clubs and whatnot that apply. So I think if we do go that route, it would be good to offer support for those people. Maybe they could do their application in paper and come in with someone at staff to to aid them to make sure that it's just not because the computer age doesn't work for everybody nowadays, and a lot of our seniors sometime would get left out on that.
Thanks for that, because I was just thinking of the people that don't like to do it online, right? Go ahead, Councilor Bell.
Yeah, I'm very sympathetic to people who don't want to do things online. I know some people like that. But I did want to just make an observation that the library is in town, and I believe that it still offers assistance to individuals who require it to manage basic computer skills. It's a really wonderful resource, a little plug there to the, to the Gates Lab at the Yarmouth, at the Yarmouth Library. So so there is help for people if if they do need help with computer literacy, just just an observation.
Yep, thank you. Okay, so there's a motion on the floor, are we ready for the vote? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. As we always say, it's the little ones that bring out the big discussions. I love it. Okay, so Jeff, what do we want to do from here? Do we, I mean, we have staff here that that wants to do the water, because we can go in camera later.
Yes, so a couple of things I want to, we'll do in camera at the end, if that was your question.
Yes, that's.
Before we adjourn this meeting, there are a couple of things that I want to update council on, and and I don't think either of them is a surprise at this point. One is that our our grants coordinator, our funding coordinator, has taken a position with NSFM. He, I think he was highly sought after by them, to be honest. He was recruited, and he's moving to Halifax for a position that I think he's going to be very happy with and obviously very successful with. So we're wishing him the best. That's Brandon Durkey. Brandon was with us for just over a year, and he made, I think somewhere in the area of 20 different applications to funds that, you know, in looking at it now, I would say that without his assistance and his role, we might have applied to five. Some of those applications were done in coordination with some of our intermunicipal corporations, a couple of them with Mariner Center and Mariner Zone Main, and so a high degree of success. And when I say a high degree of success, I'm talking, we're looking at 50% success applicant, and there are still some pending applications that we don't know about, know about yet. There are a couple that we don't know about yet, but. There are a couple that we, uh, don't know about yet, but that we've been told, you know, our chances are really, really, really good. So highly successful. I think, uh, part of the success came from his interpersonal skills, uh, his ability to integrate with our staff and to work with, uh, our engineers and our Natalie and her staff and, and operational services and Jerry and, and his staff. And to become part of the organization, understand the business that we're into, make applications make sense, make relationships with the grant providers and, and ultimately success. And, and I can tell you at the AMA conference, uh, last week, uh, some of the folks I talked to from the province, they recognized Brandon and they, and they recognized what, what skill he had and what he did. So, so we'll miss him, but I know he'll be successful in what he does next. And we'll look to replace him with somebody, uh, with, with the same qualities that can carry on, uh, with those, with those files and the success he had. The other person I want to update you on is, is of course no surprise, our, our former town engineer. Uh, I say former because tomorrow he is retiring. Uh, retired, not for the first time. He retired, uh, in 2019 to come and work for us. Back in July 2019, we were in a bit of a pickle. We had recently, uh, had a vacancy in our, in our engineering department. We had large projects such as the ferry terminal revitalization that needed to be completed. And, and there was a, on that one in particular, there was, it was imperative to meet a deadline. And that was to be ready when the ferry was ready to operate. And it was a big project. It was not traditional, uh, municipal infrastructure and we needed some assistance. And I reached out to a guy who had been hanging around some of our, um, some of our, some of our public consultations on the art center and, and had shown up at the ferry terminal for a, for a contractor's tour and, and was talking to me on the side. And I thought, this guy knows what he's talking about. So when I found myself in that pickle, I reached out to, to Mark Prophy. And, uh, he not only gave up his vacation that August, part of his vacation to come and work for the town. And we called it kind of a month-long interview to see if, if he liked the work, he liked us and if, if we liked him. And, uh, so he gave up his vacation and, and in the end, he gave up his retirement. He retired early from the federal government to, to come and work for the town in Yarmouth and to shepherd through, um, you know, countless projects. He, he went through so much money. Uh, he gave, he gave Jerry, uh, Jerry heartfelt donations, I'm sure. But he did a fantastic job. And, uh, not only that, um, Mark is, is a coach. He's, he's a, a natural coach, but he's an experienced coach in the sporting world. And, you know, the young people, and I call them young because they're all younger than me, the young people that worked under his wing in the engineering department gained, uh, a heck of an experience, uh, you know, learning from his work habits and his insights and his experience. And, and I learned as well. Uh, Mark is, is a fantastic interpersonal, uh, person and, and a tremendous communicator. And, uh, you know, I, I watched him and, and at times when we went through COVID, uh, you know, there were times when I had, uh, I was uncertain. I mean, we all had uncertainties, but I was uncertain about what to do and, and whether I was doing the right thing at times. And Mark was always there to, to, to give me his two cents worth, uh, or his million dollars worth. You know, he, he was there to, to, to support me and to support the organization. So, um, we are, we are saddened, um, to, to lose Mark, uh, in our engineering department. But he's left us in a good place with, uh, with, I think, DiMario both feet on the ground and, and ready to go. Uh, I'm thrilled for Mark that he's, he's going to have at least a couple of weeks of vacation and retirement and, and we'll see what's next for Mark. Mark, uh, has deserved, deserves every bit of praise that, that he, he receives. And, and, and he, as, as we saw yesterday at the ferry event, uh, there were, there were many kinds of words from Mark. Yet last week at the AMA meeting, engineers with the province of Nova Scotia were coming up to me and they're saying, how, I don't know how you did it. I don't know where you found Mark. I don't know how you find these people. But they, they were, they were blown away by what they, what they experienced in dealing with Mark, DiMario, Brandon, uh, when they came down, Luke as well on that team, you know, showing them projects and, and executing work that was, that was beyond anything else that they expect. Uh, anything else they experienced, sorry. So again, I just wanted to point out, Mark is retiring. I want to publicly thank him and, um, and, you know, wish him well in his retirement.
I think we all echo that, Mark. And, and for the record, we are, we're, we are sad to lose you, but, but we're thrilled that you get to carry on and have some vacation before the, the wife cut, had cut us off. Okay, um, anything else, Jeff? You good? So are we going to do the water meeting now and then? Yes, that, that works. You good with that, Steve?
Do we need a minute?
Yep.
Sorry, we need a minute just, uh, to, I guess, be prepared for a presentation. Tony has a, a visual, four slides that he wants to use. So just take a, maybe a bio break and, and we'll resume in a few minutes.